All right, it's nine o'clock, everyone, go ahead and get started. I'd like to call the special village board meeting for the budget workshop for Saturday, March 12th, 2016, to order the roll copies.
The help line here, Chapman.
Here.
Duden.
Here.
Kossler.
Here.
Cavelli, here, Crass.
Here.
Would you please join me in the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we have nobody here from the public, we'll go ahead and open and close the public forum, and we move right down to the budget presentation. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the village board, village staff. This is our 2016 budget workshop, just to kind of lay out the objectives quickly before we get into the slides. If you have to answer any questions that you have today, I've got a slide here in a moment that'll kind of lay out the major policy decisions, but what's really important is for us to answer your questions and provide any feedback. This is workshop one. Typically, every year, we've had, the last couple of years, Saturday session like this to dig into some detail. This year, my suggestion is more digging into the capital budget. Glad to answer any questions about the general funds or the operating funds, but we specifically need your feedback on capital projects. There's really seven key aspects to this presentation. Number one, major policy decisions. Second, we always like to review the accomplishments of the village board through the last budget cycle. We're going to go through the executive summary of all of our funds of the village. We continuously have kept a one-page sheet that kind of gives you a case on a page of where all of the taxpayer dollars are held for various funds of the village. The balanced general fund is balanced, but we want to talk to you about how we got there and some thoughts and feedback moving forward as we continue to wait for more information from the state of Illinois on their budget situation. And then, as I mentioned, capital improvements are just critical right now, as well as important to lay out some of the summary of some of the other miscellaneous funds, as well as special project initiatives. These are the main checkpoints that we see today. We'd like to land back on the slide at the end, but we're happy to answer the questions along the way. Number one, staff's recommending the balanced general fund budget over the last 90 to 120 days. Folks over at that table, as well as other middle management staff throughout all the departments, has assisted in making some balancing choices for our general fund. We continue to run a lean operation, and we want to lay out to you some of the ways that we got there this year, but the good news is we're balanced heading into this meeting. We've had some testimony from the police pension fund. As you recall, we had a workshop session at committee. We've, I think, done a good job as a village to work in partnership with our police pension board over the last couple of years. They came to speak to us recently, and one of the things we've been able to bake into the balanced general fund budget is a significant jump in police pension fund contribution. From last year was $585,000. As recommended, the budget debt's in front of you, it's about $720,000. It's about a $130,000, $135,000 jump in the balanced budget. Third, continuing to endorse operating practice of reducing headcount if possible with the use of privatization cross-training. It's been a multi-year philosophy. We have headcount at about 58 full-time employees right now. We continue to use the private sector and efficiencies and cross-training to help us make sure we have the right staffing, and we always think about the pension costs and other costs of public employee headcount. So we continue to be creative, and each department has had a role playing. Last, investing in capital project fund balance, completely into critical one-time projects. We've now finally, after a number of years of preparation, we're at the apex of a number of opportunities that'll be talked about today at a more high-scale level for this town for the long haul, and you're going to have the opportunity today to be significantly involved in directing those projects. And then, lastly, capital improvement program this year is primarily focused on planning and design of a number of initiatives ahead of us, as well as a patching program. Key accomplishments, this is a huge one. We started this slide last year, and there would be some other slides about our fund balance and debt, but with the plan in front of you, we're, we still remain at about 47.5% fund balance. Our target by policy is typically 35% to 40% for the general fund. We remain in a solid position above our policy because we continue to run operating budgets in a very lean way here. This year, we hope to clear the year with about $180,000 of surplus that gets added to drop down to a fund balance. So we're in a healthy position, which is critical in an environment where we've been very miserly overall with property taxes, including a freeze this year, but we also need a balance because there are some unknowns that come forward. We talked a lot last year about the state of Illinois. Having a fund balance allows us the insurance to operate, and it also, from time to time, can be looked at by the board for transfers to other important one-time investments. Last year, some of the overage above the 45% was moved on a one-time basis to the police pension fund. So the work that the staff has done over the years to continue even when they get an approved budget, to not have the target of spending it all, spend what's needed has helped us create that healthy position of the village. We still remain at an 882 rating. This triangle kind of tells you for municipalities the scale of credit. For four and a half years I've been here, we haven't issued any debt. We're going to talk about the debt that we have on the books here in a minute. We remain at 882, and that was confirmed, almost ironically, this week. We had a letter from Moody's this week that confirmed our 882 rating. We're not out for debt issuance. You know we've hired a financial advisor, but they confirmed that high-quality, very little credit risk rating, and given us some indications of some of the reasons why. So this is very valid slide this week.
Chris, do you, or maybe Mary and Mike, at some point in time, could you prepare for the board, you know, an approximate borrowing cost based on where we might be ranking-wise? At some point in time, if we ever had to borrow money, I think it's nice to know the difference in what the market rate would be depending upon our credit. It's significantly lower.
Yeah, obviously.
And I think it would be helpful to know, you know, in today's environment, what those tiers are and where those rates are approximately. Or maybe you already know, Mike.
Very good. I want to follow up on that, is, does Moody's give us a recommendation when they give us that letter, anything like how to get to AA1, or is that something that comes from our financial advisor? Because maybe then, you know, we're right one point away from maybe getting up there.
I'm going to ask your financial to come in and see at committee. That's the firm he just hired that's helping us with reviewing our special service area debt. There may be some opportunities to refinance, help the residents in those neighborhoods, and they can speak directly to you about the Moody's report. The answer is yes, there was some suggestion over there about very solid aspects of the village portfolio from a fund balance standpoint that was said in this letter. So what we, you know, talked about back here is proving to be, you know, very important for us, because if you issued that down the road for a police building or some other, you know, aspects, it's really important. They also said police pension funding is a key aspect, and they noted that, like many municipalities, we were not at 75%, 80%, we're in the more 50% range. So that's why things like baking into your budget, that actuarial target at 720 is so important, because the rating agencies, rightly so, are watching those metrics. So those are a couple of examples of what we learned. But these slides are important. We've talked about this from time to time, and I think it's really important to just have a visual on the debt that you already have. This right here is the general obligation bonds. I call them the Build America bonds. And when we get to the slide in a moment, which is the case on a page of all of your funds, we'll talk about this in a minute. These proceeds are isolated in a specific fund, but this shows how much time that debt has to 2024. The first board that hired him back four years ago gave him a target to work to pay off that debt as soon as possible. So the first time that the rules say we can pay it off is November 1st, 2019, and we're on track to do that. You have electricity tax, it's fully dedicated to a bond fund, and so you'll be able, if nothing changes and you leave that alone, based on our projections, you'll be able to pay that debt off in 2019 instead of 2024. That's been a multi-year effort, the staff and the board. These revenue bonds, Michael is working, sphere financial, look at all of our debt portfolio, but you can see we're on a paid-off on these projects. These were for some neighborhood improvements that were done. That's going to fall off the ledger here very shortly, because that's good news.
Do the payments from that come out of the general fund?
No. Water and sewer. This is an INPA loan that was taken by the village for wastewater plant improvements back in '02. So you see the schedule of how much we have there. It's through the state of Illinois, it's a discount program essentially to municipalities. Down the road, we do more wastewater improvements, we're probably going to have to look at that concept. Some of the trustees that were here with me, trustee Kraus, trustee Duden, a couple of years ago, we brought Trilogy in to do a watering study. When I got here, to make sure that we had a good handle on consumption, our costs, our debt, and the board took a cash basis at that point, some communities issue a lot of debt. We didn't have that direction, and so we've been spending some balance that, through that study, was released, and we've been doing neighborhood improvements, watering, that you've seen because of that study that was done. We're due to do that study again, so we're going to need to do that this year. It's time to reset that. We had a five-year rate ordinance that left a flat, stable 3% increase a year, and we're not overly concerned, but it's time to look at our consumption, look at our capital projects, and consider options. But this is still on the books for quite a while, as you can see. Then, these are the two sets of debt issuances for special service area bonds that we've got under the microscope right now. I'm not ready to make any promises on this, but Michael's working in the sphere, and we're going to see if we can take these back out to market in some way and reduce these interest rates for these residents. We're basically the steward for these neighborhoods that have a debt on their tax bill. This is not per se our, I mean, we issued that, but it's paid off by now. So anything we can do to refinance that has huge help to those residents. There may be an opportunity, we're looking at it now, but it's important to see those five, you know, key pots of debt. Going on to our overall accomplishments, we welcomed three new village board members this year. The board chose to freeze the village's portion of the property tax levy, it's an important decision. It's baked into your budget, and we remain balanced even with that decision. We continue to partner with local and regional municipalities on various projects to reduce costs. You improved an audit contract. We got our bids, you'll have on your agenda Tuesday night. The concrete contract, which we led with about eight other towns in McKinnon County and Lake County. Janitorial with Lake and the Hills. Our crossing guard contracts are work in progress, we're trying to get Crystal Lake to agree to let us jump onto that. They're not quite there yet, but these things are continuously happening. It's part of how, I mean, it's not simple to balance a general fund budget in this economic environment, but the work that the staff has done to continue to maintain, build those bridges has been phenomenal, and that's how we can balance, because we're not just on capital projects, but also the general fund projects that are funded by those dollars. We're lowering, stretching our dollars. Good example is the sidewalk contract with, with seven, eight towns, we had about seven bidders. If we went out to ourself, we might get three, but by building that base and leading it, we're getting more bids, it makes it more competitive. So we project, I mean, this is a number that's an estimate. I don't see too much snow out there here in the next two weeks, but we're planning on a $180,000 in the black number for the year. Prior boards have, when I got here, we were running, we were ending the year with quite a sizable balance each year, because we hadn't really branched it down on our projections as tight as what we are now. We run with the help of Mary and Michael and the department heads. We run not too far off 100% spend budget. As I indicate, there's some flow that's left over at times based on seasonal weather and spend, and things such as that, but we run a pretty tight budget as compared to four years ago, so usually what we're asking you for is what we need. Secondly, these two labor contracts were agreed to this year, approved by the village board. Quite honestly, we worked real hard with our employees, police officers settled on a four-year contract. We're sitting in year one of that, as well as year one of the SEIU contract. We worked with not just the employees, but the situation that we had with threats from the state, you know, concerns about employment status, things like that. I mean, bargained with them, and we're able to work out what the board believed to be fair terms. We had two unanimous agreements that were passed this year. A lot of hard work, wait, excuse me. A lot of hard work from Chief Pat Finland and Director Morimoto of both those agreements. I think you should be proud, and I think our employees are in a great work environment. I mean, that's two-thirds of your headcount. 58 employees that, you know, have a fair, you know, arrangement were moving forward, so it's a good accomplishment of the staff and the village board. We were able to continue with the Chamber of Commerce special event. We know that we've now broadened out the special events that we want to possibly fund and source, and interestingly, yesterday I had the first application for an event that came in for a run, a charity run in the community, so we're going to be able to review that and possibly source a new event. It's pretty interesting. Those are from gaming funds, that was the direction of this board during this fiscal year, but we were proud to have about 6,000 people down in Cary even. Chief Finland and I have worked very hard with the C County Board to consolidate dispatch. There was a state decision that said that our county had to go from six dispatch centers in a county, down to three or less, and the chief and I worked with dispatch to bring two huge new community partners into our joint dispatch center, both the Lake and the Hills and the Village of Huntley. Those are letters of intent. I'm not right now reviewing actual intergovernmental agreements with those two towns on behalf of my board. I anticipate that those are going to move forward. It's a great addition, it's a good long-term planning, you know, I asked the board about 10 years ago, made the decision to shed its dispatch center and move into C County, and we're now seeing some of the fruits of consolidation because of the economic environment in the state, and just the situation here made the decision to be in a very stable environment. And I'll tell you, I just was reviewing the budget yesterday. When I got here, our budget, and it's based on poll buying to some extent, so that's, you know, a lever, but we were spending about $340,000 a year when I started, and we're down to about $293,000 right now, and that's before this consolidation. So we're managing our costs. Continue to enhance transparency and customer service by the direction of the village board, the web streaming of meetings. We've had a few glitches, but, you know, you gave us the opportunity and the tools to get this started. We've been recording our meetings, including the one today, and updating our website, customer service tracker. Really spent a lot of behind-the-scenes work with staff to make the business experience better, our residents able to see our meetings, so it's a huge accomplishment this year. We were able to pick up the three properties through the federal funding, through FEMA, then went to the state of Illinois, then to Cary. We got three of the four properties. The homes are knocked down. This neighborhood has had trouble since the 1960s. The board took really the bull by the horns in July of, I think it was 2013. We had a meeting downstairs, about 80 people, very upset, in tears, very frustrated with drainage, and we took the leadership, and now at least we've got some space to park some of that water. Eric's going to be working with the team to build that out this year in a more of a friendly component to that neighborhood, so it's a huge project to the board that's been done over many years. Repainted the Cary-Gonkin Water Tower. That project was deferred due to bids that were a little tougher a year or two ago, and we were able to get a delay on that project, and went back out to bid, got better numbers, and the project got done. That's a huge accomplishment of this village board that sometimes people don't even see. You did this road program this year. $1.5 million was invested from road improvement dollars in neighborhoods throughout the village. That's a lot of work for a non-homehold community. We're investing the dollars that we have from taxpayers that have been built up, you know, over time, from a variety of sources, but that's the work that you accomplished this year that all of us should be proud of. I want to also say, what's important is to aggregate enough work together so that you have a good portfolio to bring bigger contractors in town. We've had Arrow work with us for a couple of years. It's not always a great situation, do small, like half-a-million-dollar projects, it's usually better to aggregate, and that's why Eric's now a leader in the team in the county, looking at bidding with Woodstock, McHenry, other communities, El Gonklin's volunteered to bid with us on road resurfacing now because of municipal partnering. So as our budget is a little more on the small side, because we've front-loaded a lot of the investment, we might be able to take our half-a-million and get bigger bang for our buck, because we've gotten out some bigger towns that have bigger work that can add to ours. So it's a great, a great set of direction you gave us, and we're really making it happen.
Eric or Chris, so if you go back to the Build America bonds, which were for streets, and then take the budgeted amounts from that point forward, we've probably put in, what, five to seven million dollars in our roads in the last?
And I've got a slide, I've got a slide to show you the scoring of what your payment improvement is here in the presentation, but you're not far off. Couple other key accomplishments, we're finally seeing visible signs of progress for some small size, in my opinion, economic development. Dunkin' Donuts just got permitted, right, Brian?
Yeah.
Starbucks has had a few issues on their site, but we're working through it with them. Kids are kids, daycare's going to move forward, and then the approved burger came. Visible signs of progress. More to come. Moving forward with a couple residential projects, obviously Garden Place Apartments was very controversial. It's moving forward to groundbreaking, it started this week, Harper Point, the Cary Street Townhomes. And then this board is now in process, actually this week, working on a conceptual land plan for the end state of Meyer, depending upon your future legislative actions. The next slide is the executive summary of all funds. This is probably the most important slide in the whole book. A little tough to read up here, but it is in your book. This is, this shows where all your money is, and all the different funds of the village. Municipalities follow a fund accounting model. It's not necessarily the norm in the private sector, but this is how government accounting standards tell us that we got to budget our dollars. So we, with Mary's help over many years, we've created a very organized environment for revenues. You see here, you know, 8.3 million in, 8.3 million out, the balance. You see the unassigned general fund balance down here, just under $4 million, so you're maintaining, you got a spend of about 8.3 million, but you got a balance of about $4 million, so it gives you a marker. These are all the different funds that source what we do. MFT is building a balance. We'll likely have this balance to look at next year for our road program as we focus on design this year and some of the bigger jobs that will, and part of the reason why we're going to do this, we're going to go over in a minute, some of the bigger jobs we have that we're going to design this year, we need to get in line for federal and state money. Right now, there's a huge capital bill coming our way, and so we need to be very nimble and get some work designed, because there may be some one-time opportunities for the town that we won't see again, so that's why we're talking about the design approach this year. But next year, you'll have a balance of about $1 million to decide, you know, what to resurface next. Road improvement, as you see, we burned it down, we invested it, that's what it's there for, we put it in the neighborhoods. This is the first time this balance has been drawn down, but, you know, from the philosophy that the prior boards had, the taxpayer money's there for a purpose, it's not there to sit and balance, it needs to be invested. You've invested in your roads, you're scoring at about a 78, 79 level on the INF scale, you've done a great job keeping neighborhood streets improved with the debt, as well as your own MFT and road construction dollars. You continue to be ahead of the curve. This is the bond fund I was talking about. The electricity tax is fully deployed here. So you got roughly $400,000 out, that's the bond payment that ties back to that debt, but you got about $600,000 coming in of electric tax. So you see that delta between six and four, that's that extra, that's what's helping you pay that thing off in 2019. And we believe you need to leave it there until 2019. These other funds we'll go over, they're more of our routine funds, vehicle replacement. You all know that this balance is primarily driven, this $1.4 million, from Meyer material proceeds. We've invested that in actual vehicles for police and public works. We maintain a balance, and that's been a fantastic benefit to the overall financial portfolio for resident services. Our TIPS, we'll get into in a minute, revolving loan and water and sewer, as well as, I think this should be touched on, these two funds here at the end. Your parking fund, these are all your decisions, but we're leveraging about the $1 million, $1.1 million balance that we have into a metro project. Those are commuter parking funds that have come in from parking fees, they need to be used on parking and transit type amenities. So this balance that has been saved is now able to leverage, you know, $2 million in federal money to make an improvement downtown. So we'll talk more about that down the road. We're all pretty proud of this building fund. We moved $750,000 last year by board policy from the capital projects fund to seed this for municipal facilities down the road, and this is the impact fee from Garden Place Apartments. You now got $1 million sitting in a balance that we didn't have last year at this time for future municipal building work. You're likely going to need a referendum down the road to get that project going, but I think that the concept of having seed money of municipal funds budgeted is essential to a future business case you can choose to make it, to the residents, you know, about a building that might be needed.
The electronic utility tax, is that pretty consistent year after year?
It's been decreasing, each year, the amount of tax that comes in.
Why would that be, do you have any fit for it?
People more efficient than we use.
Okay, so different kinds of loans and whatever.
I'll touch on the general fund at a high level. I have a couple of points that I want to touch on, but you see it's balanced, and you see we're staying just under $4 million in the reserve fund. Quite honestly, the budget's pretty nuts and bolts. I mean, we're glad to go over any questions you have, but we're seeding, you know, we're doing a better job now of our IT replacements. Those are just some things, those are dollars that are from other places as well, but when I got here, this place was way behind on information technology. We're not quite where we want to be yet, but we continue to take bites out of the apple, and that's a key investment that continues to be in the expense portfolio, but wanted to emphasize that. Our headcount has reduced from 65 full-time employees to about 58 full-time employees now. We've had a couple of part-time hires that are also part of the employment portfolio. We've done some outsourcing, but we've eliminated a number of pensions in a number of key positions that previously were here, including the finance director position, which we did not seat back with a new department head type position. We did a couple of private model. Those are decisions that we'll talk about over time. It continues that emphasis. The one piece that needs to be mentioned, number one, we've had some attrition in headcount, which is natural, and it just happens, people retire, move on in unemployment. We've got a position that was vacated by a longtime employee right before the snow season, right about Halloween. We haven't replaced it, we're not recommending to replace it, we're recommending you consider this year, and you'll award it by contract, we'll have to go through the exercise, but we budgeted $60,000 for contracted snow plowing and some other similar costs, so we bid that out to the street. We might be able to do it with joint municipal partnering. Crystal Lake has a snow plowing contract. We think that it's time to graduate to a contractual snow plowing operation, most likely focused on parking lots, some of the downtown high-impact areas, not necessarily neighborhood routes right now. What we've been planning is for some time, it's your call, but that's baked into the budget. This is the most important piece today. Wanted to talk a little bit about some of the sundry funds and their capital investments before we get to the special project list. I need some feedback from the other. special project listed. I need some feedback from the Yonk. You see the three percent rate adjustment that's been passed by ordinance. Back in 2012, the board made that five-year decision, so we're continuing that. We're holding our own in the water system. We launched a very aggressive, and I have some slides there, I'll show you on water meters. We're doing a great job getting efficient water meters put into the system on a multi-year initiative prior board pass. We continue that. We're going to need to look at our SCADA system. This is the computer system that helps us monitor our wastewater and water facilities. It's arcanic. So we got a big expense project there that we're studying this year for future funding. We've talked at length about phosphorus limit work. That continues. I'm not going to dwell on that today. But we're starting to fund some of the work that we need on that huge multi-year initiative, as well as some vehicle replacements. This, this is added as a placeholder right now. We have a lot more to stay to stake on the wastewater work, but it's timing forward. The road fund, that's the balance that's left at the end of this year's road program. Again, I mentioned design, 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 design. What's left is helping us seed some design. This is for future road program work. We've got some retainage all over. We're going to do a patching program for some of the neighborhoods this year. We're not doing asphalt replacement in neighborhoods. We're just doing patching. And we're doing design work that you'll, you'll be heavily involved in for the Three Oaks Road Design. We had some public feedback on that, as well as a possible project for First Street Extension. We need to call that issue question. We need to get in line if we're going to do that right now for federal funding with the capital bill coming. We need to make a decision. It's a huge community impact decision that affects some neighbors in the adjacent area next to the high school, but we need to kind of decide it, because it may be a money funded federal job if we decide we need it. The TIFs, the long story with the TIF is TIF one. As a placeholder, I'm just recommending to spend the full balance. You'll decide if we ever do. I did that because I've had some feedback from representatives of the Selkie property. I'm not necessarily forecasting that you're going to get a development, you know, tomorrow there. However, I need the liquidity of this fund. We've been very open that we would be interested in participating in some infrastructure improvements if there is a mainline retail development that comes there. That's ultimately your call. But these dollars are designed to be spent in that area. We've always had the mindset, please ask any questions that you have. Those TIF dollars are designed for water main, sewer connections, hardscape type of stuff, not necessarily at all other rebates, et cetera. So this is just a placeholder for you in case we have something comes in. It gives you some flexibility.
Chris?
Yeah.
If you want to jump in here, I was going to talk about something, concept. I was going to ask. Can marketing, can marketing type expenditures come out of the TIF money for properties in the TIF?
Potentially, yeah. It just draws down your balance for other work. But yes, potentially to some extent. Land conservancy, this is the fund that's been building from the Meyer proceeds, separate from what's gone as a vehicle equipment fund. This is for future park state use potentially down the road. The reality is, it's a small number. One point six is not a small number. The work that might be needed up there over the lawn hall could be substantial. The board's right now trying to make a tough decision for the community about whether to extend that or not, or a discussion will happen, including this week. But a good balance has been built. We're going to need community partners. We're probably going to need, in my opinion, our Park District as a primary partner, and they may be interested in working with us to maximize the amenity benefit over the lawn hall for all the residents of Cary. But this is some seed money that at least gives us something to work with, but the costs of those type of projects are substantial. So any leverage that we can have to do hardscape work, grading, any kind of depth work, anything you do now where you're not paying for it, to be a benefit to your residents down the road. Revolving loan fund is always an interesting one that comes up. State money that was given to us twenty-five years ago. We still have in balance. Rules have changed substantially on what this can be used for. I've always been concerned that this is going to get taken back one day by the state. What I have, this earmark for at this point, it's not simple to do small loans out to businesses, which is what this was used for back about fifteen years ago. If we get one or two major corporate citizens on Three Oaks or other parts of town, major corporate deal, Brian and I will talk to DECO and see if we can get a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar first lien bump to help with infrastructure improvements, those kind of things to clear that out. We can't spend this fast enough, because I do think it's going to go away one day. And I do think that a deal that would bring more full-time employees to the town on a higher scale basis would be huge. We did talk to a business on Industrial Drive regarding this that did expand its business some time ago. We worked with state representative McSweeney's office to get state help, and we got it within two days. It was a business that was threatening to go up to Kenosha because Wisconsin's competing for our businesses very aggressively. So we got some practice in a kind of crisis situation on what to do when somebody's looking to possibly leave us. So I think this is a good story, but not one I want to sit on for too long. I want to invest that in town, really as soon as we can, because I think it's going to go away.
Chris, the expenditures or the outlays in that fund, what are the terms by which they get repaid? Or do they get repaid?
Well, what I'm explaining to you is that many communities have these sit-in from many years ago. And there was a time when we were audited about three years ago by folks in Springfield. There's nothing wrong here. It's just a balance account. But they were looking to take them, pull them back from towns that weren't using them. And there's extraordinarily complex rules associated with small loans and how many jobs would be created, et cetera, et cetera. And there was a committee years ago here and some, a set of guidelines in place for dispensing them. There's probably ten, fifteen that went out, but those grants that were given out didn't follow the current rules. So my thought and what the new rules are for this is that when we have a big deal, we need to go to DECO and say, look, you know, we've got an employer that wants to grow in Cary. They need, you know, X, Y, and Z capital work to be done. You know, we need you to make the rules for us on this deal so we can spend this balance to bring jobs to the state. So I'm implying that we're going to need to make our own rules up with them. I don't believe that small little grants are, make any sense. We debate this from time to time every year. I just, I've seen what they require and it's just a nightmare. So I think that using it for a couple of bigger seeded things like that property out on Three Oaks that we all see that's wide open and empty. Some big manufacturer comes in or something like that, or any infrastructure improvements on the roadways, and I think that might be a way to help out. So that's my advice.
So does, if, if the village was in a joint venture with a developer on a property, let's say something we owned and we wanted to assist moving it by forming a joint venture, could funds from that fund be used in that sort of?
I believe that an argument could be made if it's an employer where jobs are being created or retained with some actual significant count of employees. I think we can make a business case for it. I think we would need all the resources we have from Representative McSweeney, from our new state senator, to get some help with DECO. But I, I think that, I'm not promising. I'm just explaining that, yeah, I mean, that could be a source, but it's got to be tied to jobs. That's what we learned when we went to Springfield to look at this money through the audit. It's got to be jobs created or jobs retained. Dozens of jobs to be able to make their marks.
Well, in any of the projects you're talking about, you're having the construction jobs, number one, and you have the ongoing jobs in the business. Some of you can certainly make that case.
Bond fund we talked about, we're holding our own. We're on track for 2019 to pay it off. Vehicles and equipments, we've got four key, you know, purchases this year. We've got two squads in the police department. We're doing a good job holding our own replacements. Our mechanic staff does a good job of helping us forecast what's needed, so we're able to get some vehicles into this budget that are antiquated. One cloud truck, some cloud equipment and a three and a quarter ton truck, investing in our fleet with Meyer funds. Parking fund, we'll talk about more in the capital slides that I sent you last night. You got a million dollars there to help with train station improvements. I'm going to give you some slides in a minute. We don't have to dwell on this right now. I think I'd probably like to do it with the more capital improvement slides, but this is kind of the work plan. And, you know, we want to talk about this. We might want to come back to it after we take a break, but our capital fund, and it's on your case on a page, we're investing those dollars aggressively on actual projects. That fund has been a blessing to this town. We've had a lot of antiquated back-of-the-house things here that we had done for years, especially during the recession. A lot of the projects like signs, IT, improving the code, the con plan, some of just nuts and bolts that you needed for your town were seeded from this fund. This is the next, you know, list of replacements. And we can come back to this at the end, I think, because this is a key one that I want you to tell me yay or nay on, because there's some trade-offs. And you see in your, in your folder, there's some projects for the first time that got proposed that we didn't, we can't fund right now. We haven't been in that position for a while, but the good news is we've properly invested the dollars that we have, and now we have to make some choices on choosing priorities. These are, you know, some real important things that the downtown streets get. This is going to be a multi-year effort. You saw the plan from Hitchcock. You're going to see a slide in C I P where it's probably a five or six-year type spend plan, but we have to have that money to be able to spend it. So we're suggesting making a dent in it. First year, some work order time system clock issues for public works. Building access, you approved our agreement. Thank you very much for that. The grant just went in yesterday. Grant application, right? I don't think I signed it yet, but we're working on that right now. We'll come back to this later and touch on it. Cary Creek, we need some improvements. We got a collapsed creek and we got an exposed pipe that we got to fix. It's the second time I've seen this since I've been here. And we had the April 2013 storm next to the property on True Value. There was a huge rush of water that morning. It blew out the entire creek and we had suspended like twenty-four inch sewer with no supports. We had to do a hundred thousand dollar job to get it fixed in that creek. True Value actually split a bill with us, which was a great corporate citizen move. We got another collapse type situation we got to deal with in another part of the creek. Cary Algonquin, Hyro extension, again, design, design, design. This is huge. I mean, this ties to your train station project, the Maplewood property. It ties to getting federal money for that road. That right way has been reserved forever. And now you've got not just some development opportunities, but you got federal bill possibly coming. Got to get a set of plans on the table in case we get an opportunity to get paid eighty percent funding from the feds. Tree replacements, this is a huge deal. You know, we bid through municipal partnering with villages that have planned in Willbette to take down all our trees in town. Did a nice job of getting them knocked down, but they need to come back. Residents want trees in their parkways, so we still think that making a dent in that replacement program makes sense. Eric will keep bringing to you the neighborhood-centric approach that hit zones of the town instead of just doing it willy-nilly all over. But those will be your calls. Starcon migration is an important piece for Chief Finland and I for dispatch. We need to modernize our radio system structure and he'll be able to speak to that later. This is a huge improvement for our police department, for our officers on a day-to-day basis and for keeping us, you know, nimble with our technology. We're going to be a leader at CCom in this, and I think it's a great program the chief brought forward. Front counter customer service enhancements. We continue to do more with less. We've redone our front counter from time to time to adapt to the kind of customer service our residents need. So there's some improvements to that front counter to make it more visible for all the clerks up front so they can do quite, quite honestly more with less. They're cross-trained fully up there now. They all work together. Doesn't matter what department you're in. If you're going to help somebody on a water bill or a permit, we've got people cross-trained now. So now we need to take a wall down. It's like the Berlin Wall up there. It's going down so people can see. Tornado sirens, it's a multi-year effort. This is a, we still have some debt and it's going to run off the books in about five years. This will be paid off in four to five years and then it'll fall off what we've been sourcing it through capital projects. Your entryway signs, our piece is Sunset Press. There's, I think we've got with the gas that we just put in, we're about five hundred and eighty-five thousand of federal money that's coming our way. We got about two fifty of it already. Just put in for another two fifty or so, so we need to continue finishing out the grading. And then Jake has done a great job with Prescient Development to modernize our IT infrastructure. A lot of the things that just support the business operations of the village have been the result of Jake's efforts. And Prescient will be before you here in probably the next three months to lay out, you know, their first year on the job and what they see the vision of the village IT infrastructure being. This is primarily software, servers. We might be able to go cloud-based for some of our email. Some of the nuts and bolts, but it's a million dollars. Before we take a break and then really dive into that capital budget, wanted to kind of settle back on this. This is the slide we went over at the beginning. We're taking a high-level read of this this year. This is really the slide and the opportunity for you to ask any more questions before we take a break. Regarding the general fund, any of the special use funds that we have, any, you know, specific projects that you have that, you know, you don't see being funded, and we're going to talk about capital here in a minute, but from a nuts and bolts basis in the general fund, water fund, parking fund, do you have any questions?
I hear some pushback about the Three Oaks Road expansion program there. And what I'm hearing is from the residents saying, let's let the businesses that are coming in there pay for that. Why is that coming out of, you know, Cary's budget of things to make those improvements to bring them here? If they want to come here, shouldn't they be paying for the, the infrastructure and things rather than the current residents of Cary and the taxpayers? So I'm just saying that's, that's something that I've heard out there. And I expect we'll hear more about what the benefit is to using that money to bring people here.
Okay. We'll talk about Three Oaks in the tackle project presentation detail. I know Trusty Kassler had some feedback on that as well. So these are the key things. I mean, I just, I can't emphasize enough, this is a great accomplishment of everyone in this room. This is getting us, again, I started, we had four hundred and ten thousand a year going into the police pension fund. We're now up to seven twenty in four years. That's three hundred and ten thousand dollars. This board has raised property taxes a total of about a hundred thousand dollars over that four years, and three hundred and ten is going in here. So you see that that's one-third of that delta. And we've been able to afford it by economization, by doing more with less, reduce headcount, joint partnering, being very miserly with our priorities. But the hundred thousand dollar increase roughly in taxes since the day I started, you know, it only covers a third of what's going here of that, of that increase.
Chris, before you leave that pension fund, again, I don't want to get into a big, long discussion about the, you know, Micah, I don't know enough about this, the funding throughout the state and all the other towns where there are that what the average is, if we're above the average, if we're below the average, whatever the case might be. But my, my sense is that there won't be a hundred percent of the towns that reach that recommended percentage by the date. What is it, like twenty forty or something like that? You have to be at ninety percent. I forget what the?
Oh, you didn't make it to the pension fund.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, I'm sitting there, I'm thinking to myself, okay, we're doing a wonderful job bridging that gap, narrowing that gap, but it's costing us to do that. And like everything else in the world, almost everything else in the world, it seems like you reach a point, not everybody's got there and then an extension happens. Some change takes place. And I don't know, but my personal feeling is I think that's going to happen, because I don't believe that the majority of our peers are doing the same sort of stuff. Some might be, but the majority, I'm guessing, are not. So I've been thinking about this a little bit more well. I'm, I've been a proponent of moving the excess to the police pension fund. And I even brought it back. Should we borrow the money to get fully funded? I sometimes wonder, are we, are we our own best enemy on this thing? Because we are taking money away from other purposes to bridge that gap when Micah tells me that that's going to end up getting extended and, you know, we're maybe funding faster than we need to. So it's, again, not anything for discussion now. It's just something that I've been thinking about and I would just ask all of you to think about if you've got any, any feelings one way or another. I think at some point in time... If you've got any, any feelings one way or another, I think at some point in time we need to discuss that.
Okay. Any other questions on the general fund before we take a break? Any of the special use funds? With that said, we're gonna come back about 10 minutes and then we'll go through the full capital plan and get your feedback on priorities. Thank you. Are you ready to continue? I'll get started. This is the true workshop, workshop part of the session. And we're laying out, we're always trying to look at our budgets on a five-year basis, especially on capital. So, I mean, these are projections that we revisit every year. We need to make decisions about 2016. From a timeframe just to reset on calendar, typically we consider our budget for approval on the first meeting in April, which is, I believe, April 5th this year. We don't like to go to the second meeting in April because by rule we have to have it passed in the month of April. So I'd like to get this thing passed on the 5th. But today we'd like to get to like 90%, 95% decision making. If you have any thoughts or issues or questions following this session today, please see me. But this is where you get to set things for 2016, but then get a perspective on the next four years going out. Couple of key projects that are right in front of us. The Kerry metro station enhancements. Trustee Kraus and Trustee Chapman met with me and Eric and Jacob, I think it was Wednesday night, for about two and a half hours. We interviewed the three finalist firms that we're looking at for scoring for our metro station project. And we're not ready to announce where we're at with that yet. But just yesterday, we finished the, the process of homework internally to make a decision. And we have to now negotiate with the number one selected firm per the federal rules. So we're, we're ready to do that. It ended up being a firm that had been highly rated by staff as well as both of our trustees. So we're actually now heading towards picking an architect, which is the, the company that will help actually design a possible building that you as a body of seven, you know, will decide things, you know, about. The key issue that I, I just wanna briefly touch on today before I talk about the financials is, you know, I'm dealing with an issue right now with the railroad that owns the land and, you know, we're working through it. But every day, you know, new information is coming in. And I have a deadline now, Wednesday, to get some answers back from Metro. But we're not quite where I need to be yet with Union Pacific. And I'm not comfortable awarding a design contract until I can get to a place with this where I'm comfortable that we're gonna be able to work out terms that are gonna work for us. So I'll keep you briefed on this. It's a normal part of a railroad project. There's multiple competing agencies. As you know, we've dealt with the Illinois Department of Transportation already. We've dealt with Metro quite well and now they own the land. So it's a multi-jurisdictional operation. I'll keep you briefed.
What happens if it all comes to an agreement with you?
Rick, I'd tell you if I felt it's not gonna happen. But it's not so much about the land as it is some of the things that they might wanna change on site that I'm concerned about. And we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. They're good partners. They're at the table working with us. It's a normal part of the, the dance, I guess. And it's not an easy, you know, unfrustrating part of it, to be frank. And we're gonna continue to use the resources that we need to come up with a solution. So, normal part of the project. But we have a million dollars in your parking fund seeded for the year. Now, on a presumption that these issues get worked out, on a presumption that at some meeting in April you award a design contract, it'll take us to Labor Day act, in my opinion, to get the building designed and have you, you know, decide how you want it to look. So, I mean, that's, to give you some calendar sense, it takes all summer to get the thing designed. And then ultimately, by about Labor Day, the objective is to then hand that set of plans to Metro. They then have to go through their process internally to get a construction contract lined up, to get it bid out, to get it built. So that's the deadline that we're on a critical path, so that there might be the opportunity in 2017 to have construction. You'll be driving the decisions. You passed a, a resolution of all the trustees voting in favor of it to proceed and down this path. As I mentioned, there's always hurdles to jump through. There's been all the way along this job. But we're fairly optimistic that we're gonna have a great project. I was extremely pleased by the seven firms that competed for our work. We're the lead agency on it. It was very impressive. And I think we had some good architects that'll do a good job. So it's exciting. I mean, it, it could be a game changer for your downtown. I mean, you understand, and, and there's always different viewpoints of things, but that's a gateway for your downtown and that curve. There are thousands of people every day that drive down that road. And some of the opportunities that you have to kind of reset people's image of Kerry is potential through this project. So it costs money to do it. We're taking a partnership approach by partnering our funds with federal money and then working our best to have Metro help us to the extent that they can. But they're in almost a zero spend budget situation. Their, their funds are basically the federal money. And our ability to match that and be creative and do in-house some of the work that Eric and I have done is, is what's helped us to get to this point. So we just gotta keep at it. Any comments or questions about the train station? Streetscape, we've given you a forecast. You saw this in your budget workshop. This is probably a five, six, seven year plan. It's not gonna happen overnight. If we had, you know, proceeds, if we had a tax increment financing district in our downtown, the schedule would be different. On the presumption that those things aren't here, this is probably a five, six, seven year plan. But these are things that you'll be able to decide over time. And that, we gotta, we kinda gotta head under the hood of the opportunities. But you're seeing, I mean, this week you saw another article coming out about Ogonkwin. They're looking at putting 30 million dollars in their downtown. That's because, not to pick, you know, winners and losers per se of commercial districts in town, we understand. And rightfully so, other business districts in Kerry also are concerned. But this is a gathering space. I mean, this is a home. Visible signs of progress with the possible train station with the Kerry Ale House, with some dressing up of things. It's, it's just a great opportunity for you, over the long haul, to do things that boards have talked about for many years. So that's a $90,000 contribution is in this budget. But this shows kind of the pay-as-you-go approach as opposed to some alternative financing plan. You know, here's your 90,000, some gateway signage that'll probably tie in through Eric's thematic work on the entryway signs. You can tie that thing to your downtown. Some of the lighting, those are, you know, what's proposed from the first year. But you see this Kerry's out five years, just taking little bites out of the apple. That's, that's what's loaded. I mean, you always have the ability every year to, to not do any, to do more, to do all of it. I mean, it just ties, ties the money and priorities. So that's giving you a picture of, of how to get there. And that, I'm sorry, that 90,000, we're looking to start the process through what Hitchcock has envisioned that is possible as a grand picture realistic approach. But what we're suggesting with this first small bite of the apple is something that has a little bit of extra impact and not such a minor improvement. So if the board, I would like, obviously, your feedback and, and thoughts on it. But the thought was that we could use that 90,000 and actually go for the capital lighting on Westing Street. So it's only one aspect of many that are possible, that are something that's envisioned for us. But I do think it's one that would actually give us a really good head start into really changing the character to use those events. But if there's any other thoughts, prioritization that we guys for at the committee level, we're still looking for that feedback. But this is obviously just one, one way to structure that into manageable pieces over the next five plus years. What you see from Hitchcock isn't the fiber plan. That's, there's a lot of what they showed beyond that. And this is kind of at least one way to break it down to start with.
I think you start off with something that's very visible. I'm curious, I might spank the muck as you start towards it.
Three Oaks Road, I'm gonna have Eric lead this discussion.
Yeah, as Chris mentioned, and you all were aware, we had the initial public input meeting. And we got a lot of valuable feedback from residents that attempted, as well as some writings. So our consultants going through those and just providing some, some responses and, and trying to accommodate a lot of those suggestions where we can. Just as a recap, just for, I may be pressing some of the feedback Trustee Chapman has heard, what this project is. It's primarily a resurfacing project. So I know it's not the most glamorous of projects, but it is something that I was seeing from our pavement condition standpoint. Particularly on the East Caplet project. So from, say, the combat right away eastward, the pavement condition is very much in need of attention. If we don't get the grant, we don't utilize the tunnel process for the whole project, then obviously we're still gonna have a need to resurface the roadway. So there's still a need regardless of business use, resident use, that pavement condition needs to be addressed. It's a wider road and a long road. So those, those collector's streets do cost us significant chunk of money to just, just resurface. So that being said, if we didn't go through the whole process with the project, we're still looking at a half million dollars of resurfacing that would be all on our own. What we did with this project is we had a lot of these, say, luxuries added into it. But really, those are all covered by the federal 1.5 million dollar grant. So with that grant, this 2 million dollar project, I'm gonna use as a 500,000 dollar global share. Which, as I mentioned, that would be just resurfacing alone. But with the grant process in place, we're able to get travel signal modernization. Make the EDA compliant traffic signal on First by the high school and a turn lane at First Street at the high school exit and the park exit and the bike path extensions and the, I'm gonna advance a little more slide, Chris. Add this buried median to give us a pedestrian refuge for that mid block crossing across. People going from the south side of the road up to the bike trail network, the kind of lane, broader across the roadway just to get to that trail system. We'll get, make it safer with some beacons and a median. Those are the things that are in addition to, but all covered by the federal fund. So that's, that's kind of the main reason why we structured the project in the scope that it is, just to leverage those funds. The pedestrian safety and the bike path extensions are what scored, what made the project as a whole score higher. If we had come forward just to resurface thing, we wouldn't have had very high and we wouldn't just be resurfacing on our own. So that's kind of the general scope of that project. We're on second on the ten Y B-list. We have a council mayor's meeting next Thursday, actually, which, depending on the results of that meeting, may result in another project on that B-list moving up into the program. So we're very much on the threshold of getting that federal funding in line for that roadway project.
Eric, how, how long would that, that median run?
Just what I heard is just the green area. So really, it's just in front of Kerry Grove Park. So from the First Street intersection with the east leg over to the combat, roughly around the combat right away.
And how wide is it?
It's the exact same width as the existing center turn lane, which actually doesn't function as a turn lane because of the driveways on its stretch. So we wouldn't change the width of the road overall. We wouldn't lose any travel lanes. You would just have basically 12 feet in the center of the road that we expect to maintain and plow, which would not be a raised curve with grass inside.
So, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of a lot of the stuff that the former mayor in Chicago did to downtown. And I'm not suggesting we go in and put sprinklers and all the flowers and things that we did. Is there a capability of at least putting trees in that, in that median?
Yes, definitely.
Because I think, I think that would really make the road look nice longer.
Yeah, landscaping options that, yeah, you don't have one, a swath of asphalt, unused asphalt in the center. We're showing the grass just as the placeholder. We'll be able to put trees, people can landscape beds. And it's stuff that can be done with the project or phased in later as we go. But it gives us, I think, some aesthetic flexibility and, and obviously the landscape we had, you have a less to maintain and just environmentally is the right thing to do from a, from our perspective. But it also highlights, it is in front of Kerry Grove Park. So from a, just from a, say, the district standpoint of aesthetics, it sets off what's already a pretty beautiful amenity in town and just makes it better.
Go ahead.
The theme of, as Chris mentioned, for next year, design, design, design. This is, again, phase one engineering to prepare us for some hopeful federal fund eligibility. So this is the extension of First Street. So that same zone, Three Oaks at First, existing signal. You have the first stub that ran at the high school entrance. And obviously at the north end, we have Kerry Junior High, the roadway that's along there, basically connecting those two. So the phase one study would be geometric alignments, more or less establish the preliminary cost, environmental and access perspectives, which would give us not only a planning tool for federal funding, but also in coordination with the park district and their current ongoing master planning work. Gives both the agencies a better idea of how to best plan for the future for this land alongside existing neighborhoods and on the park district's current property.
And I wanna emphasize, these projects are huge. And they can be controversial, this one especially. We started to see it, as you know, we went to a public meeting for Three Oaks, the high school, which we held in the new Fine Arts Center. But many of you called in, said, yeah, I heard from Resident X or I heard from Resident Y afterwards. I mean, 80 people there. And then they talked to the neighbors and then questions come up and then the church called us. And that's, that's the idea of this phase one study. I know that this one will be very, very controversial. And so we just need to understand that. And these are decisions that'll have to get made. There are other uses. And I'll just be very honest and direct to you. I mean, there's this area next to the high school. The park has in its master plan a vision of a huge community recreational center. It's unincorporated land. It's not from the village. And they're probably gonna come to you and say, we wanna annex it. And, you know, it'll call the question some of the roadway issues, you know, as well. And it ultimately is the village board's choice about whether a road goes there or not. It's not the park district's. But obviously, if there's a huge community use there, you know, that's, you know, an issue to consider. But the neighbors that live, you know, adjacent to it in the subdivision will, will need to be engaged, need to be, you know, spoken with. There's a routing that can happen, that can address some of those concerns. We just need to understand that. This has been, for many, many years, sitting in the history files of the village. And any kind of north-south road in this county is huge for traffic flow. And that doesn't mean it should be built, but it means that we're gonna have very great, you know, very good opportunities to get outside funding if you decide it's needed. And for, you know, agencies like the park district, that's huge. Years ago, I think 10, 12 years, way before my time, there had been some mobilization through this park project at that point. And the village basically told them, you gotta build the road, figure it out. And it went nowhere. And that community resource wasn't built. Now they're doing master planning. We're much more adaptive and professional in how we handle things as a board. We, we're good at working with our neighboring jurisdictions. And now is the time in your history where you need to think about it. But it's not gonna be without controversy. It's not gonna be without needing to talk to a lot of neighbors. So I just wanted to point that out.
So Jim or Dave or Kim, anybody that's had calls on this or comment, I mean, I've had nothing but positives from a few people that have said stuff. I'd just like to hear what you guys have here.
I haven't had so much on this particular project as more on Three Oaks. But this one, I do view, I agree with, with Chris's comments, that there are a lot of people backing up to this that never want this road to be there. That, I mean, they chose the bottom here, so it's either here or there. But, you know, my view, if that does get developed as a park, I don't see any other way of it being a, a big park. Because there's no access to it, access through a dare or any of the, you know, community streets just isn't gonna work out.
And I mean, our view, because we've changed the mindset of this town, you know, our view is that we are the leaders of outside funding that can help the schools, that can help the parks. And they need us to, if we're gonna do this, to use our resources. Now, you've heard today, they'll phase one design for a couple of different roads. We may have competition within our own town, you know, for projects that we think we need. We might want that road from the train station out to Kerry Ogonkwin. And it's, you know, we might have to pick, pick and choose a little bit in terms of timing. Because scoring, it's not always easy to score high on multiple projects in one town at one time. But I would say any kind of north-south road, if you decide to do it, is gonna have a great shot at countywide support. So just important to lay out, not a decision per se today, other than your budget's gonna have dollars in it to do the design. And we need to listen to our constituents and residents, you know, about these things over time.
Is there, just a couple of questions. Is there a lot of, we like to shift the road further from the homes and still have it be an effective? Eric?
Oh, definitely. That's part of, part of the preliminary engineering process is, it's an alignment study. It's kind of the main benefit we get out of this. We would know the right away requirements. We know preliminary cost estimating. So moving forward, not only do we have the first checkbox done of the grant process. So moving forward, not only do we have the first checkbox done of the grant process, which enhances our story, but we have better idea of details by which to help plan and prioritize. What I show here is obviously just for illustration purposes, but you can even see it kind of potentially shown it, push over, but the scale is hard to see, but leaving a lot of that existing tree bank there. Whether it's here or obviously if this is going further, does it bisect the property? I mean, a lot of that is why the outreach is necessary at this stage of the process, especially with the park district. So as they enhance their plan, their use of the property, do they need a huge area? Or are they looking at some smaller subuses that wouldn't, that would be okay with having a split on both sides of the road? That's a lot of the, the thought that goes into this level of design. And outreach with any phase one design process is built into that project. So it will be obviously expensive from the public side, but also direct with the stakeholders in the core, being the schools and the park district and the residents. Sorry, my answer for a short question.
Here's, okay.
Here's another one, I mean, here's the other one right now. I mean, you understand what we're, what the community's considering with respect to the Maplewood site. You understand that we've got a train station project brewing. Uh, this road has been, this is easement that's been preserved. Uh, future development's going to have to consider that as well. But I mean, this road needs to go in, I mean, separate from any kind of potential development on the site, which is ultimately your call. Just think about being able to take a high road extension to get to Cary O'Gonquin instead of driving down the main street to go that way. I mean, just think what that would do to your town. Uh, and again, federal money is, is a call. And by doing this, spending this year behind the scenes, Eric's going to be very busy. It's not going to be asphalt going out there in the neighborhoods. Every, every hour we have is going to be get these plans done, work through the community engagement. We'll figure out, is there a path for it, what agencies can help us? That's how we take advantage of outside dollars.
You know what, I tell you one thing, listening to this stuff, I don't mind competing against ourselves for dollars. I'm tired of competing against other towns. So this is a good thing, if we are competing against ourselves, so be it, but the ideas are fantastic.
This is a tough story, go ahead.
Well, as, you know, from the current fiscal year budget, we had approved the design to not only look at addressing pavement condition out of park avenue, but also some of the drainage issues that exist, particularly on the west half of this roadway. So Silver Lake Road over to about Gordon. I just had a meeting with our consultant section yesterday, so I got the preliminary, first preliminary update from them. Uh, so what I had also was an updated cost estimate. Originally, depending on the scope of those drainage improvements and how much infrastructure could be reused or had to be rerouted via maintenance and so forth, that was a lot of unknowns that we had originally plugged into the, uh, the budget. So initially we thought it was going to be about a one point two, one point three million dollar project. Not just, particularly with right away acquisition and something like that for, for the drainage. Based on their preliminary engineering study, now they actually can reutilize a lot of these storm sewers, they're actually sized big enough and with some restrictors, we can actually not cause downstream drainage impacts and, and address some of the drainage issues with the neighborhood for normal events. I want to make it clear that this doesn't provide them a hundred years for our level of protection. All it does is right now, given a small to moderate event, these homes are reverse pitch driveways. They're down low and sheet drains from the north down to the south, right toward the creek. The only thing between the creek and the roadway is several road holes. Uh, so it, it isn't an end goal to say they're never going to see water on the roadway or in those backyards. And their backyards are apparently the creek. But it does actually put the water in an appropriate spot for the normal storms, so that they at least improve the situation. So that being said, that improvement to say, you know, a normal storm event is to the tune of about eight hundred thousand dollars is where our cost estimate is right now. So it's, it's better than I thought, but it's still a significant dollar figure.
That'll basically be, I mean, you sell a million dollars next year in balance in MFT, I need it all up in one, one street. You know, and so I mean, but this is what in Glenview we used to call a road actomy. I mean, it's a complete rebuild and it's needed and it's not going to go away, it's only going to get worse. Uh, these are tough, big chunk projects to do. We haven't done many of them, we've been spreading our dollars around pretty well. So I think that we're going to need to try to line up some dollars for this, but there's not a lot, a lot left in the covers. So Eric's done a good job working with HR Green, I mean, when I first saw this, I was full of one point two million dollars plus, you know, about another eight hundred thousand out of utilities. You know, we've got it down to about eight hundred thousand for one point two. So we're really focusing what really needs to be done, so we're going to have to deal with that in future years.
You can see that the so patching that we have done has addressed a lot of the major roadway surface issues. Obviously at this point, from a priority standpoint, the driving factor in, in our, this recommendation to try and have this in FY seventeen eighteen is the drainage improvements.
Uh, the roadway improvements, I mean, you see that, you know, we have a multi-year focus, entryway signs, wayfinding signs. We're creating a theme that you drove, I mean, it got a lot of great feedback from you on, on the signage. It's not, you know, final done yet, but because of those early decisions, you're helping us to kind of set up a new model for how we want to sign in the town. I'm not going to get into too much detail about this, but I know white topping has been something we've been trying to find a way, a place, and try to agree on, you know, which engineer is going to decide what road, you know, it makes sense for. Uh, but it's pushed out, I mean, we're just running out of resources, but, you know, I don't want to do, I don't take that lightly. But, you know, you got, you got to set the priorities and decide if that's something you want to do, that's where it stands.
Another reason that it wasn't just pushed out randomly to that nineteen year, the other reason I'm recommending that is because of our downtown improvements. Some of the scope that we had in that other slide for, for downtown, were some applications to curb bump outs, parking, sidewalk improvements. A lot of those things, it would be from a sequencing standpoint, made a lot of sense to change those things first, then adjust the pavement in the middle. Whereas if we resurface our white top structure first and then reconfigure the sidewalks on the curb islands, we're impacting something we've already freshly placed out and might be reconfiguring and changing. So it's from a sequence standpoint, that's one reason it would make sense to do that.
Eric, can you go back to the other side of the sign? Now that, next one. Third item down, we actually planned about doing illuminated signs. Oh, I have to say, come on, there's only two people here that realize.
I, I.
We've been talking about this since two thousand four. From a perspective, when we redid Janus Road, I said, let's put an illuminated sign here and all the bozos on the board at the time said, no.
My, my, like, from a, oh yeah, I don't see that, my first.
Sorry, Jim.
Recommend is that these are items that have safety enhancement benefits. Uh, but also they, they, they dress up the, the look of the signals that are.
Absolutely.
I think you've seen, I started before I left and it's now coming into implementation, Long Rock fourteen in Crystal Lake. It's too much, they've been popping up all on here. Then they, they look great on our, make our road as well. Uh, it's, it's the new norm and I'm even suggesting, yeah, we, uh.
Because it could be retrofitted too, yeah, sorry. It could be retrofitted, that was guaranteed to us.
It can be retrofit and, and not necessarily. But you can see the example there.
Jacob can do it at the time, though.
Then you can be allowed to do a different color, so you can even do something similar to what our neighbors are doing, but do a little different outside.
For the entryway signs, is that the full budget that would cover the cost of those?
That would cover all, uh, the locations, yes.
That's an exciting project.
Yes, people will notice that.
Yeah. We finally found someone that can help us with our image. Drainage improvements, nuts and bolts type work, it just has to be done, you know, and picked up over time. Not going to spend a lot of time on it. Like we were talking about with park, you know, we've spent an enormous amount of time on Sunset Crest. But remember, I don't know how many people came to us and said, this has got to stop. So, um, we still have to look at some of these other, especially that creek, so that's in the budget. Uh, now I'm going to talk quickly about vehicles, we kind of already went over that. I mean, there's some pictures of what we're talking about with the Meyer line and what that's done for our town. Uh, facility maintenance, uh, we started, we did a townwide survey of all of our buildings a couple of years ago. Uh, so we use that every year to help, especially in utilities and the like, direct dollars to what needs to be replaced. Obviously this site itself, I'm not going to dwell on it. We still are deferring some maintenance in this village hall complex till we can make some decisions. But, um, you know, those are interesting projects as well that we just do behind the scenes.
Chris, on the vehicles, again, I've asked this question numerous times, I just want to make sure that you guys answer that this is still the best way, is it still the best way to buy versus leasing police cars, let's say?
Well, I think there's two, that's a two-pronged answer. First off, it's a joint collaborative effort, so, you know, the pricing is set by bidding. But second, our vehicles go to public works or building zoning or some other areas that are used within the village. So I don't know if you leased it, if you would have that option and be leasing it over a period of five years, but we're paying them off upfront and we're getting, you know, uh, longer periods of use out of those that you like if you lease them. So I think right now, from my perspective, I don't know, I had to defer to Eric to some degree, but I think purchase over lease is probably a better option now. If there was other uses, maybe administrative uses, you might go get leasing for those administrative uses.
Which we don't have any.
And then the second thing is, are, you know, is, are they going to hybrids at all, or I know we talked about this.
I'm really for the, Eric, what do you mean for police vehicles?
We've got a slide on green initiatives coming up, don't we?
Okay.
Not so much on the police vehicle side, I get for down pursuit vehicle, pursuit rated vehicles, you might see that happen. But again, on our end, we tend to cycle, we, we transfer out of patrol duty into investigations or administrative duty, those same vehicles.
What is our annual spend for fuel as a village? Do you know what the type of your head?
It's gone down because the price has come down, so.
Of course, I mean, the gallons are just still the same rate.
Up our mileage, our overall mileage that we drive our vehicles, because we're, we're a compact town. We have seventy-five, seven hundred miles of roadway, seventy-eight, but the actual mileage driven as a total is in a tie. Now granted, that has its toll on gas mileage, obviously the short trips and so forth, but, uh, as a whole, a lot of times going to hybrid or electric, just on a, I guess, from a pure dollars and cents standpoint, the return investment is, is tougher. But there are a bunch of other benefits from greenhouse gas and other environmental.
My biggest concern here is that the Crowe Senior Center is a money pit. And, um, the, the downstairs, I don't know many of you have been downstairs in the Crowe Senior Center, uh, but we used to house a lot of our boxes and files and things down there and it's completely been removed. Uh, this was a budget initiative two years ago, we created, rather than rent and storage space, we were able to create a solution at Public Works. We've taken everything out of there and I mean, that room is full of boxes that went back thirty years. It was damp, I mean, it was just a mess. We have no municipal use for it anymore. Uh, we know that the seniors play cards, they have programming, there's a park district employee actually has his office upstairs. That building needs some decision, there's sensitivities to it, it's obviously got community history. But, you know, whether it be through private development projects and trying to be creative, when there's opportunities to create space for seniors, whether it be for our own police station project, might there be the opportunity for a community room where that could be merged with it, provide another community use? Make a lot of sense to have it next to a police department. But that building is at the end of its useful life. The park district's looking to us as to what to do, um, you know, where that, you know, lot is located. Uh, I just very concerned about the safety of that building and we need to do some planning on that. So I wanted to point that out.
Chris, can we have any place in the village to relocate whatever the uses in the building today are?
Yeah, I mean, we took everything out that we had, that was job one. And, you know, the park district would have to speak to, you know, the program in use. It's a convenient, nice space for those seniors, but, you know, I, I'm Grayslake. We had a senior building, it was not an indoor project, it was a market grade senior building right downtown, a private project, and we built a community room on ground floor of that. And that is now a private building that houses Grayslake's senior uses. They play cards, they got a kitchen in there, the whole nine yards. There might be more than one way to get at that. Um, and again, I want to emphasize our own building. Jacob, who's not here today, he and I go down to North Riverside, uh, because we're in an insurance cooperative for Cary and our meetings happened to be at North Riverside Village Hall. And they've got, I don't know, eight, ten thousand residents, um, full service community. They have a senior room right in the village hall and they love it. I mean, you should see it. Every time we go down there, I mean, seniors just using it every single day. And I mean, there are some synergies with, you know, our project as well, so just wanted to point that out.
So, you know, to make a comment on this particular piece, like I've done in the past on Village Hall, I mean, I will add a hundred thousand dollars there over the next five years, right? On a building that we know today is not useful long term. So my thought is, or at least my, my question is, why, if we can relocate the seniors, maybe to let them use our village hall, will we meet boardroom, I don't know if it can be reconfigured for a couple nights a week for whatever they do. I don't know what they do there. So if we have another place to move it, wouldn't it make more sense to move everything out of there, the uses out of there and?
That's up to you. I've got the contract, has the two rooms right there, fourteen, and they, they do already do some senior program.
So, you know, the second piece of that, in my mind, and I've said this before, so I'll say it again. I, I've always viewed that if Maplewood, whether it's public, private developed, however it gets developed, it should have something as a community center as part of that overall development, whether it's called Crowe Center or not, I couldn't care less, you know, it would be fine with me because that's a lot of our history. But I think at some point in time, we have to, you know, call it what it is. We're, we're really putting good money into something that we know is going to be gone. It, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I'll bring it to committee so we can decide. Green initiatives, um, some of the, you know, we're, we're adapting to some of the requests and they're small, visible signs in progress. We've got, you know, this has been pressed to do the pollinator rain garden, uh, things like that. Eric's starting to feed these in, you know, over time into his work plan. Can't all happen overnight, but there are some things that we can do with our resources to continue to, you know, foster green initiatives. Wednesday night, we're here with, you know, three architects. We're talking about how could we make the new train facility building, use green or LEED type best practices to be good stewards of the environment. We're talking about the composition of the shingles. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we immediately put into action, so these are some opportunities. Um, this is a huge slide that we always need to come back to because when we say that we're going into planning mode this year, I think it's a misnomer to some extent. Again, we, we showed the slide on the bond fund. You're putting six hundred thousand electric tax into that bond fund every year. And so you really, in my opinion, if we did a million and a half last year of roads that you set the list for, I think you really did two point one, uh, because you also did six hundred thousand in debt service on what you front loaded with that debt issuance. So you can tell residents that, yeah, well, we did our work, you know, a good chunk of our work ahead of time. We bid it out in a thoughtful way. Uh, yeah, we take a year off, but we're, here's why we're doing it. We're, we're looking at federal money, we're looking at state opportunities. We're scoring, I mean, this, this number is excellent. I mean, there are a few towns, I mean, in this region included that are at that level, very few.
At the Sub-Pavement Management Task Force and they executed a survey of people that attended. It's like, what's your average PCI, your average pavement condition index? We're by and far the highest of that, at least of that subset of the representatives of that whole committee. Industry standards, maintaining network average here, I mean, we're, we're up there. So we, like I said, we can afford to take this year off to, to reset ourselves for the future without losing a lot of ground.
So we've talked at length, you know, we're continuing our maintenance. These are some of the things that we joint bid with other towns, where we're helping basically do more work with the same dollars by aggregating the bids and references. Um, again, this is not an absolute, this is a forecast that shows we try to spread our dollars around the community, show some of the areas that we have targeted in the five-year plan. We'll keep talking about this with you as time passes. If you get residents that come to you about their neighborhood street, please let, uh, mirror, you know, I mean, we can always, you know, make mid-course corrections, talk to the board, continue to think about our resources. Please bring those into us. Pavement patching, we're spreading it around, uh, doing more with less. Water and sanitation, this is the phosphorus project, we've gone through this at length, I'm not going to spend a lot of. Water and sanitation, this is the phosphorus project, we've gone through this at length, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but these numbers are staggering right here. And we're going to have to think about how to finance that and what the best way is to meet the requirements that we have from the feds. Water meter replacement, this was started by the board in 2012 when I started, we're replacing all water meters in the town. We continue to take a bite out of it. This is quietly being done by Public Works every day. Down there in our finance department does a phenomenal job, scheduling and helping our staff to use their time wisely. So we're shrinking headcount, we're outsourcing more, and we're doing more at the same time into the infrastructure of the village. Never, never enough water towers to paint, we did clean one as well. Utility projects we've touched on, you know, continuous, continuous effort, Eric and his team, Mike Walsh. The new structure we have with our union contract, just a lot of great work that's going on, long time coming. Wellhouse facility maintenance, again, that's an outgrowth of the facility study we've done, that's just plug and play out, helps us direct our resources. Same with the wastewater plant. Those are kind of the nuts and bolts of, of the budget. So, I've got a request that I want to make regarding the general fund here in a moment that we haven't all talked about yet, but, you know, I wanted to end with some comments about the capital budgeting, you know, if you have any. Great. Next step is kind of a, a work in progress, and it doesn't have to be per se decided tonight, I'm glad to have conversation with you offline. If there is one thing that did not make the general fund that, from, I'll say, the cutting room floor, that we might need to think about, and it would be adding a fifth sergeant to the police department. We would like to have, and this is not a new position, it'd essentially be a bump-up promotion, a backfill is not needed. But we'd like to add a fifth sergeant so that we have complete staffing on all three shifts without using the officer-in-charge model that we found to be not functioning very well over time. Through collective bargaining and our process, Chief and I engage with labor and, you know, obviously we worked out as a board, you know, fair agreement, and the chief and I, priorities through the direction of the village board have been to continue to enhance the supervisory structure of this village police department. And over the course of five years, we've made progressive steps really every year in doing so. It's a, it's a much different police department than it was five years ago in so many different ways. But I think this is an important, I don't, amendment, you see how tight I am on balancing that budget, you know, and I can still do a little work behind the scenes before now, in, in April 5 consideration, but it's probably a twenty to thirty thousand dollar cost. Not, it doesn't all go to wages and benefits, some trade-offs and overtime, but, you know, I'm asking if you'd be comfortable with me trying to find a way to shoehorn that into the budget. I think it would be a huge step forward. The list process has been completed, and we'd like to proceed, and I want to get your feedback.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. So, fourth sergeant?
Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, we, we have three shifts, this is talking about obtaining first-line supervision, we have four sergeants. To staff five, to staff, you know, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, we need four-point-three people. So we're point-three people short in regards to just the sergeants alone. In addition to which, in the next couple of years, I'll be sending people to school staff, police staff command, and that's ten weeks that they're out. So now, by adding a fifth sergeant, it's a reclassification, it's not going to be backfilling some, you know, with a patrol officer, but they take them out of the labor agreement for sure, number one. But number two, then, we're able to have five sergeants that we can plug in so that we always have first-line supervision, which I believe is the most important part of our police department, in any police department, to keep us out of trouble and make sure we're delivering good, sort of, police services to the community.
I agree with you a hundred percent on that. So, what's the fourth sergeant do now? Are they rotating shift?
No, what, yeah, he, he's, right now, he's swinging between days and afternoons. So we have a day, day afternoon, and an afternoon sergeant, and then on the midnights, you have one sergeant, so there's always a third of the time that there's no sergeant on midnights.
So the fifth sergeant would be on midnight?
No, well, no, no, it'll be on midnight.
So you have two midnight sergeants?
Right. So, but we work at three-six, or six-three, so there'll be some overlap, but then, when the sergeant's not acting in the passing of a first-line supervisor, he'd be acting as staff.
But if you have staff and command on vacation, days off, you're still going to have that?
And we have to use deputy chiefs to fill in the spots here and there, and we've already spoke about that, it relates to reassignment on a temporary basis, so we don't lose that first-line supervision.
To me, it just seems, it seems like a top-heavy for a small agency, but, because you have two W chiefs, right?
Right. One's oversees patrol and all the people, so he's got twenty-two people over him. One oversees investigations, records, our vehicle maintenance, IT, he's heavy in regards to administrative functions. And I will tell you that, that person that deals with the administrative functions is always busy.
Because there's a succession planning element to this as well, you know, we continue to adapt. And from a succession planning standpoint, it also seems to make some big-picture sense.
With the OIC, so the OIC program is not working?
Well, OICs certainly fill a different role, and they certainly aren't as effective as a sergeant, certainly as they relate to their positions in the organization. You know, they're more stopgap than they are in regards to, and we have some very good OICs, but we've kind of narrowed those down to make sure that we're using good OICs to oversee the shifts.
Okay, because they would only cover on the sergeant's out there.
And again, you're paying an OIC an hour overtime to act in that capacity when they're out of classification.
One hour overtime, even if it's an eight-hour shift?
Yes. No, three hours. If they, they act, as an OIC, three hours, they're getting an additional hour overtime.
Per hour, they get an hour more?
Which, if you do the man, they're making more hourly than if it was a sergeant.
Right, that's, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know how you want to engage on that, it was, you know, I told you there's a couple true workshop things to talk about, this is one of them along with the capital, so, how would you like to proceed?
So Kim, are you saying, I don't understand the police order hierarchy as much, maybe I should, are you saying that from an economic perspective alone, that makes sense to do?
Well, with the overtime, it would, I mean, it, it's, if, there are similar sized agencies, the agency I work for, and we have four sergeants and one deputy chief, so five command other than, we're, again, the same size agency. But we also have twelve hour shifts, but we don't have the OIC program, and the OIC program, I think, is very important, because I agree, all these new supervisors there, because time and time again, there's issues that come up. But if you're saving money with the overtime, then it probably makes sense to do that.
Thank you. That's all I have. I'm glad to take any feedback, answer any questions, and unless there are some, we'll have to go and bring this to April 5.
Are there any particular slides you want to go back to? I don't have any slides, but I have a couple of questions. Got a lot of money to spend, so is there a lot? You'd be surprised, I can always find these. So the thing that I think, I just want to put on the table, it's been part of the last, gosh, three or four, what's meetings, maybe even longer that I've been a part of, is eventual village hall, public safety building, police station, whatever you want to call it. Okay? And those things, even if we had funds for it today, or a better part than just the million dollars that we have towards an eventual facility, that I know when I was on the board in Mundaline, our police station cost us ten million dollars. I don't know what it would cost us today to build something for this town, but it's going to probably cost at least six or seven million dollars, I guess, whatever we end up building. So you've got to plan for that stuff well in advance, and I think the monies that we've been putting aside is a really good start. But in a couple of years, if I understand the Build America bond effort properly, in, in 2019, the monies that we're setting aside or putting towards the Build America bonds could become available to use for the village, is that correct? Correct, okay. I, I think we have to, you know, one of the things we struggle with is how would we fund a public safety building? Well, to me, I'm asking a question, Michael and Chris, can we utilize those funds towards the financing of a public safety building? So that's question one. Can that, can those funds be rerouted at that point in time?
Be glad to delegate that to Mr. Sharpe.
Yes, I mean, probably in terms of an opportunity, without creating, hopefully not much additional tax, you'd be able to cover most of the debt service from your new, for your new building, using the tax proceeds that are currently coming in from the electric utility tax. That saves you two things. Number one, if you have enough other alternate revenue sources, you would not have to go to referendum in order to get a bond issue approved to build that facility, because you already have a revenue stream in place to cover it. Please understand, too, with your Build America bonds, Mary, was that originally a fifteen-year maturity? I know it was more than ten, I believe it was fifteen, but if you were to build a new public safety building or a new combined public safety and village hall, odds are you'd have a debt service schedule that'd probably take you out at least twenty, twenty-five years. So the debt service payment on an annual basis would drop from where it is currently, paying these bonds off in fifteen years.
Or you could borrow more money.
Well, I, one of the tests, when you're looking at the building, is to figure out what that approximate cost would be and then figure out the best way to pay for it, okay? So those are some of the issues. It's already in place. I think it would cover a majority of the debt service. I don't want to say it would cover all of the debt service payments on the new property. And it wouldn't cause an undue burden on the taxpayers. Please understand, for a use like that, your object is to have the people pay for it that are going to be utilizing the benefit of the service. So if you don't want the residents of today to have to foot the bill for something that's going to last for twenty-five, thirty years, you want people during the life of that facility to pay their fair share for it.
So, thanks, Michael, I got to show that. And I kind of figured that was going to be your answer, that's why I wanted to bring it up. You know, I have, I have personally struggled through several different boards where there's never been a real collective appreciation for the, this building. And I don't know what's going to happen a year from now when we have another election, I don't want to be on the board, but it, I think this board needs to really sit down and say, what do we do with our physical panther? Which every single year that I've been on the board, we've put in a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars. And when I think back ten years that I've sat here and gone through the same damn thing, we put a heck of a lot of money into this building. Does it look any different to me? No, not at all. So, I really think that, I'm not going to make this decision today, but I would just ask, maybe Michael, you can sit down with Mary, I mean, it's a simple, I, I could do it. Sorry, if I've got six hundred thousand dollars to play with and I got twenty-five years to repay it, and my interest rate is an assumption of four percent, how much can I borrow, right? I mean, it's a simple calculation. Those kinds of things have to be presented to this group of people, and we have to sit down and say, okay, this is the 2016, 2017 budget. In two years, that money's available to us. If we started today, we wouldn't even be, if you had the money today, you wouldn't even be breaking ground for way over a year. So, we should start the dynamics of the funding for a project that's a couple of years out now and get a group of people, assuming there is a consensus to do that, to, you know, to start that motion, because guys, in another twelve, fourteen months, guess what, you may have a different board again, and you guys haven't appreciated this, but believe me, I have. It's, you start here, you make progress for two years, new people come in and you go right back down to here and you start all over. And that's the reason it is so frustrating to me personally, that I don't see things really move fast enough, because people have differences of opinion, and I get that. But if the consensus of the current folks that we have is that we need to do something, then I think during the next year, we ought to put that in place. And we need people like Michael and Mary to sit down, give us the what-ifs, you know, here's funds that we, we would have available, because a referendum for anything, you know, that'll die, more than likely, and then we're right back in the same boat all over again. So, I, I would just say, please, prepare something for us, I've asked for this, I don't know how many times before, what could we do with monies that we have? So we don't have to have referendums, and provide the, the elected officials with some idea of funds that we could take when we replace the Build America, Build America bonds. And, and, you know, with Maplewood and some of the other stuff that's happening, that time's going to be on top of you guys before I know it to make those kinds of decisions. And we just don't have the financial resources, you know, to pull it out of general funds or whatever, it's going to have to be through that. So, I, I, I think this is the time to, you know, to kind of do those pro formas and provide that information to, to this team so people can make an educated decision. I really appreciate you making that.
Sure. The only thing, other thing that I'd add, just so you have a little better understanding, is if you generated five hundred thousand dollars a year annually in electric utility tax, unfortunately, you couldn't use five hundred thousand dollars or all of that money to fund an annual debt service payment, because you need to have one and a quarter times coverage to support any debt that's out there. That's the current parameters now that are set up. So as long as we keep that in mind, we'd be able to project based on interest rates today, how much of an annual debt service payment we'd be able to cover. The other thing, though, that you have to take into consideration is how long a term do you want the issue to be? Are you comfortable with twenty years? Are you comfortable with twenty-five years on your building?
Can you, can you run several different scenarios, say twenty, twenty-five, and I don't even know if they would go thirty, but, I mean, these are things that you make for, I don't want to say lifetime, but they're long-term improvements.
Sure, I, I would suggest that we need to have at least a nexus, I, I absolutely, we have to do that. But the conversations going on about the pension fund and issuing debt for it, I have a real hard time of. I mean, the pension board now is, is going to go, you're doing it right now this week, math on issuing debt for that. And I mean, I think we're getting, you know, pulled in too many directions. I would argue that if you're right about this specific one, I think we should not send mixed messages to the pension fund. And I, I just, I'm going to advise you that it's, it's, I don't understand completely reading the concept of issuing debt to catch up on pensions. It's an obligation we have, we've seen it from movies, but we're, we're catching it up through contradictions and we're going to have to think about overtime payments. But I think this ought to be our focus of where our debt vision is, we could need all that needed. And I'd like that clarity so that we don't get so many balls in the air that we're not being clear about what we're doing.
Well, I would, I would say this again for myself, and Kim, maybe we think about it even more when she mentioned what their consultants come on them, and I think we maybe really need to rethink what we're doing with those excess funds that we have towards our pension fund. I don't know, I don't think, again, it's on her side here, but probably needs more consideration. If, you know, the consensus of the consultants is that this will get extended out beyond 2040, then, you know, maybe we really need to rethink, why are we catching up? So, not so fast. But that was a perspective, you know, when we talked about it the last time, none of us had that perspective.
Sure.
So it's new.
Sure.
So information.
So we will do, unless there's any disagreement, we'll do, Espir Financial and Michael and myself will do some, as well as Mary, we're going to do some analysis on some scenarios. Any issues with that?
What do you guys think? I mean, I, Jimmy, you always have a lot of opinions. I don't have a string under here to go talk to you, I think you've got things going on in your head.
I, I'm not really for issuing debt service towards the pension fund, and it seems like we're, we're doing a pretty good job of catching up on the pension stuff. It's not perfect, but we're, we're doing a job. But I do like the path you're proposing with this, I think we need to address the issue. If there's a way we can do it, to do it without a referendum, then ask me that, because people are not that, that current environment for you in the near future.
Please, please understand, you'll never issue pension debt without a referendum, so.
That was, and again, I'm, I'm trying to defend myself. That was, and again, I'm trying to defend myself. It was, it was a way to kind of get something off the plate because we would talk, every single year we talk about that. But really, the more I thought about it personally, and then Kim next mentioned what their folks are saying, it's that, gosh, the reality is, they're likely to push it. So why are we utilizing the precious little excess that we have towards something that, you know, maybe a 2050 or 2060 event at some point in time? I think we need so much in this town now. I, you know, I hate to say I'm not really agree about 2050 or 2060, but we've got a lot of things we need to do now.
Yeah, I mean, you went, as I said, in four years, it's gone from 410,000 a year to 720. And we've met the actuarial target. Every single year, we've found a way to carve it out. We know that they're right, that our seven and a half percent assumption is too high. The next target is to get it to seven and a quarter. There's a way to make it in at seven and work towards that. I think that's a noble goal, we should work towards every year. But I, yeah, I appreciate this direction it helps us.
Is there a way to go up to me? Or we're going to 24?
So I said seven and a quarter. Because I mean, we were at eight, you know, now we're at seven and a half. That was a huge chunk of money, that's part of the 300,000 dollar difference. But yeah, if you get to seven and a quarter, I think it should be next year's target. And it's going to make, you know, 720 probably, high eights. And I got to just keep trying to find ways in that general fund budget to, to do that, you know? But I mean, I understand your concern about property taxes completely. It just becomes increasingly hard, you know, in an 8.3 million dollar budget, to find for pensions, another 100 grand, another 200 grand, you know, that's forever within that without changing service levels. So we've been able to do it today, you know, but we'll keep, we'll keep working, you know, on that. It's multi-year effort. Anything else?
I have a question about the, what should we do with the water and sanitation fund? So just help me understand, when I'm looking at this, it's 14 million dollars?
What is?
Water and sanitation fund at the end of 20 fiscal 2017. Might understand that numbers turn on?
I guess, that does not, please, first off, that does not represent cash that's sitting in a bank account that's just sitting there for your purpose. I think a fair way to look at it, or an easy way for me to attempt to explain it to you is, four or five years ago, when you had that original trilogy study done, the consultants that you asked to come in, they were asked to provide you with a water rate that could be set each and every year for five years going forward, based on the capital improvements that you needed at the time in the water and sewer system. Many of those capital improvements at the time that study was done were paid from, from excess cash that had built up in the water and sewer fund. And the point of that trilogy study was to take whatever that six, seven billion dollars, possibly as high as eight million dollars, and draw that balance down to a more reasonable level so that the next time you had to go and set rates, the people who lived in your community didn't look at you and say, I get nuts. There's six, seven million dollars sitting there. So I think we've successfully gone about drawing down that fund balance. I think at the end of the trilogy study, the original five-year period, it was set that there'd be, I think, between two and two and a half million dollars that sat there. Two, two and a half million dollars probably isn't a lot of money. Because in the event you needed an emergency repair, you'd at least have the cash on hand or the ability to be able to pay for it. When the new trilogy study is done, which is in the budget that you're looking at today, the consultant, when they come in here, will first off, look at the number of capital improvements that need to be done for the next five years, including that phosphorus improvement that needs to be done. Now please, if it needs to be built a year from now, there's not much you can do to the rate structure to pay for that improvement in cash and cover 1.2 million dollars, okay? It would have to be built in over a period of time. But that's why you go through the exercise, not only to define the capital improvements, but to figure out what the appropriate water rate is needed for each of your residents to pay for their fair share of that system. And every five-year period, I would encourage you to continue to go through that exercise. So number one, you're aware of the improvements that need to be done, what the potential toss to those improvements is, and your residents will always know ahead of time what the water rate increase is going to be to cover those improvements.
So what makes up the fund balance in water and sanitation? It's not, is it, is it infrastructure?
Yes.
Trustee, do what, if you see at the bottom right corner of the schedule, there's a breakdown of the fund balance. So all that 17 million, you'll see there's an amount called invested in capital assets.
Yep, got it.
Invested in capital assets, restricted debt. That's the amount that needs to be kept in cash to cover above and beyond your existing water and sewer debt thing that's building. Unrestricted could be cash and a few other things. But even that six million itself is not entirely cash that's sitting there.
So let's just say that it's five million dollars in cash.
It's probably less than that, but okay.
Okay. So given what we might have to do to here, improve or hit some mandates, this phosphorus thing or whatever, add a four million even in cash balance, are we underfunded in your guys' opinions in this fund? Given what, what kind of capital improvements we might have in the next couple of years to make?
I will say that that's why this is the year to do our reset study again. It's important to do it routinely. It was a drawdown decision in 2012. But you're right, I mean, now we have phosphorus that, at that time, we didn't know. There was, that was not baked into the trilogy study. Not yet. I have no clue what that was going to amount to. And I was told when I got it, it was like five to six million dollars. And it ends up being maybe a million or two to a million, you know, two million. So I think it's just setting the table for why we need to accelerate that. It's in the budget and we can answer these questions more eloquently when you marry Eric's plan over the five years with consumption and then the current economic place of the fund.
And then if, if we were to move with the partnering with Fox River Grove, is there a big impact to what our unrestricted funds would be? Would we have to make a lot of improvements to be able to do that?
Uh, yeah, it's a whole different animal that we're looking at. It's a complicated concept. The question is, you know, pros and cons and, you know, what's the upside to carrying? Because there are some improvements that are going to get made, need to be made in the plant to accommodate that. The concept is they can shed their plant. Of course, we need to continue to have, perhaps, out with them regarding that. But we're still grappling with our own story to them about what, you know, our position is. So that's, this, this is going to be the year of analysis in the sewer and water fund because of that, because of phosphorus and just because we've gone through our five-year cycle and we need to make sure that we're managing the resident water and sewer rates in a responsible way.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
One of the things that we kind of talked about was how to allocate through the budget, something with regards to do some artist renderings for some of the new developments that we have going, that you could post up out there. I just think that's very visual for residents to see. I mean, even if you had something with, you know, we're, I think we mentioned we could take some of the TIP money and even do it like with what's going on at an artist rendering at some point. We had one for the selfie property, for sure for the Burger King. You know, we've got the, whether it be Burger King coming in, whether it be Metro. And we saw great presentation slides that Eric has presented. I just think if you have some artist rendering, I don't think it's that expensive of a hit to be able to have residency visualization of things that are, are coming. You know, so.
They come forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the way to have something like that, I just think that that would be beneficial for people to see things are happening. You know, yes, they're going to see movement if Burger King starts making some, you know, we see some activity there. But they have something up there, I think that that can build momentum. It can bring new excitement to other developers that may be considering working for things. And I think that that's a very cheap spend for a nicer return, I can tell residents to see some of that.
Have we, do you see any merit having that discussion about establishing a TIP for downtown?
Yeah, I do. I mean, that's, that's a conversation that can be had. It ties to other issues the board's going to discuss later today. You know, it needs to be driven by thought, analysis and understanding in that. A lack of understanding and, I mean, but when you start talking about community vision, with the kind of downtown opportunities you have, as well as some redevelopment opportunities that can happen off the railroad corridor, I mean, that's one way to get there and accelerate things to look at it from a different perspective. And obviously, taxing bodies have different viewpoints of it, especially in this county. You know, TIP is almost a four-letter word. But what I'll say is that it's a tool and, you know, there can be some engagement, you know, regarding that. And that might be a logical way to marry a couple of priorities, but there's also some risks. And the direction that I've had to date has been to reduce TIPS, to close down what I have, to, you know, get things developed. So that would be new direction, I'm glad to receive it. But I just like it from the complete board. And, you know, I know what to do if you want to do it.
I mean, I break it up more from the educational point of view and, you know, to your comment about the kind of winding down the other ones. I mean, it's basic, the other ones haven't been successful, purely. So it's easy to have a position and wind something down that's not working. But the area that potentially we should study for is way different than where we have the TIPS now. And the dynamics potentially could be successful as opposed to, you know, to just sit and languish for years.
Well, I would, I would argue about the selfie TIP. I mean, it's just taken a lot of time. We've had a recession occur, you know, in the middle of that. And, you know, we've got to balance. We have not been a low-debt community. Many communities issued debt in the TIPS and then they get in trouble. Post-recession Lake Zirk, you know, is a tough example of that. Park Ridge is another example where a lot of development happened before the recession. They bought a bunch of land and then everything got reset by 40%. And now they're, they're bleeding running. You know, we just need to be thoughtful about it. It's not something to be afraid of, but it's certainly something to use in a miserly way. I know I would argue the current TIP on 14, someday you will see that come to pass. You've got to balance to contribute to that project that's capped. And it just has taken more time to.
I, I get all that. Generally speaking, isn't it a fair statement to say that if you issue a TIP at a point in time when your land values are as low as they've been in decades, that would be the optimum time to issue a TIP? If you think about the concept of a TIP, right? That you recapture that as values go up. So if you're issuing one when the land is already as cheap as it's been decades, that to me seems an optimum time to do it. I wasn't.
As long as you have a plan. Because what other bodies would argue is that the village was flawed in 2006 when it issued that TIP across the street from downtown. And, you know, where is it? I mean, there was no plan, it's just like, well, let's TIP that, you know, and then the market crashed. And there's really no plan at the front end. And so I would advise a plan approach rather than let's do this and then figure it out. Because as you indicated earlier, boards change, people change, you know, things happen. And it makes no sense not to have a plan. So I would concur with what you said. There are ways to do it, I just need to be told. I mean, it's certainly something on a work plan that can get added. I mean, it's a very common thing to be doing in this environment. Great, thanks, that's all I have.
All right, is there any future agenda items of discussion by the board's board? I will entertain a motion to adjourn it to executive session to discuss real estate purchase or lease under section 2C5 and personnel appointment. Appointment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees under 2C1.
Seven.
All favor.
Aye.
We'll be adjourned to the back conference room for this, thank you very much.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Seven.
All favor.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All favor.
Aye.